Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Anamosa Library and Learning Center, one point zero roll call.
Trump.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tukin.
Here.
So.
Here.
Four members are present in chamber. Two members are absent and they are not, uh, remote. So with the, with the four council members in attendance, uh, to carry a motion, it will take three, uh, favor to, uh, carry that motion. Two point zero pledgeable agents.
I.
Pledgeable agents.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Think they forgot to put it back after they painted it.
Three point zero motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings, three point one, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, regular session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Teresa. Questions or discussion on the minutes as they were submitted? Penny, would you conduct a roll roll, please?
Smith.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Tukin. Yes.
Motion to approve carried, three point two, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, special session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay, also discussion. Penny.
Tukin.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Smith. Yes.
Motion to approve carried, three point three, June fifth, twenty twenty-three, special session.
No, keep it through.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Jeff. Discussion. Penny, please.
Crump.
Yes.
Smith. Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, four point zero, public hearings, none, five point zero, old business. Five point one, project status update, Anamosa Police Department renovation project. Dave's complete construction, documents only. Continue to make progress.
Continuing, I did not include any photographs, uh, in this council meeting. I can get those to anybody if you want them. Uh, I, I made the decision not to put those in there just because if you go into the police department, it looks really nice and, um, the photographs don't do it justice, so I don't want to spoil the surprise for anybody.
Which door should I go in?
Um, the plywood door? I'm, I'm not exactly sure at this point. I have a secret entrance, uh, with a garage door opener, so.
Well, I will be patient to just walk on by.
There you go.
Also have any comment or question for Jeremiah? Five point two, project status update, Shive Hattery, documents only.
Uh, so I did, uh, go through the final walkthrough with Shive, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they took these photographs from the construction observation report. Uh, there was, uh, still just a, well, mainly one issue that they were going to look into and include, uh, regarding those, uh, ceiling units. But aside from that, um, as stated in this report here, the other punch list items had been taken care of. Asked them to expedite this as quickly as possible, um, really would like to wrap it up before the end of the fiscal year if possible. They weren't sure if we were going to get the document, um, shuffled around in time to make that happen, but, uh, I will email them again and see what we can do.
I see just today, there's new rock showed up. I'm assuming it's going to be that side parking to the west.
Yes, yeah, that was independent of this, but they're working on that as well as some other grass seating and some other miscellaneous tasks, uh, from the fire department side of things.
Any other questions? Five point three, review and approval consent agenda, H R Green. What I will do at this time is read each one of the four, uh, as we potentially could make one motion to approve all. I'll let the motion drive that bus. One pay, one pay request in the amount of five thousand dollars for G I S Services Administration and Updates. Item two, pay request in the amount of five hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents for G I's, G I S Services Water Department. Item three, pay request in the amount of two hundred thirty-five dollars for the Third Street Sidewalk Extension Project. Item number four, pay request in the amount of one thousand fifty-nine dollars for the Anamosa Sidewalk Program.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Council discussion on any of the four items. Public comment? Penny, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Item number four, there is a type error with item number four. I will cite it without the air. Review and approval pay requests from H R Green Architecture in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for the Booth Street Water and Storm Sewer Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Tukin.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Five point five, review and approval pay requests from Martin Garner Architecture in the amount of one thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-three cents for the police station renovation project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Stowe.
Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, five point six, review and approval pay requests from Martin Garner Architecture in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the police station renovation project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Teresa. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Crump.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, five point seven, review and approval pay request from Dave's Complete Construction in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-five cents for the police station renovation project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Tukin.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, five point eight, review and approval change order from Boomerang Construction in the amount of five hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents for the Fire Station Edition Project. Does the council have questions or discussion prior to a motion?
This, the first one is just for dealing with the lift station?
Uh, yes, that's correct, uh, labor and materials for powering that lift station.
Now move to approve. Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich. Uh, further council discussion.
So I'm just kind of curious, why? Why wasn't that part of the original proposal for the lift station?
Um, I didn't receive any notes, uh, it looked like this was passed on from, uh, Kraus, uh, as a sub through Boomerang.
Anything else regarding this agenda items? Penny, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, five point nine, review and approval change order from Boomerang Construction in the amount of three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars, forty-two cents for the Fire Station Edition Project. Also discussion before the motion?
So again, I'm having a hard time figuring out why we're having so many change orders.
At this juncture?
At this point in time.
Yeah.
And additional door hardware, why was that, that not part of the scope of the project to begin with?
So this, sorry.
No, no, I'm not.
I, well, I was just going to add, uh, this door hardware has kind of been, uh, um, an issue here over the last month or two, uh, the door hardware that was originally installed didn't, uh, fit the specs, and so they had to work. There were some issues as well with, um, matching the existing door hardware to the future door hardware. They were trying to work up a solution to make everything at least consistent, um, which also caused some other issues. So this was what was, uh, discussed. I can, uh, tell you, there were several people involved that were trying to find a good solution to make it match, and, um, the change just involved, um, a little bit higher expenses to make it work.
But why should that be on us if they didn't do it right the first time?
Did not even, the, the doors that were put in didn't even match or align what was part of the original.
Were there, there are
Line or specific.
Narrow doors than what Shive proposed originally? Um, and then we're turning around and paying for refixing something?
I know there was discussion about the whole locking mechanisms. I, I just do not recall what, what path we were going to or if we even made that decision.
Yeah, I, I, does this involve the, like fobs or something to get in the side doors? That, I know that was discussed.
That, that was part of it, yes, so there, um, there was discussion over fobs, there was discussion over a keypad. Uh, the problem was connecting the keypad, so they're all on the same, uh, system, so to speak, uh, so that prompted some additional discussion on what hardware to use. The original issues with the door sizes became a, a issue as well, um, building that was, um, put up, there were both, um, manufacturer specifications as well as, um, engineering specifications, um, to my understanding, uh, Boomerang had, um, followed the spec- specifications for the manufacturer specifications, not the engineering specifications, which caused a little bit more confusion as well, so, um, the door hardware just became the final, uh, final issue, try to work out or hammer out the details of due to those, um, differences.
Well, and shouldn't some of these change orders be coming through Shive instead of Boomerang?
This, yes, this was provided by Shive, um, so they did, uh, both of these, this just, uh, uh, this request for change came across their, or was submitted to Shive on their, um, paperwork, but this did come from Shive Hattery.
Okay.
This. Has this been installed?
Yes.
So I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, meaning, so we have a change order that would have came through whomever to shy. It would have came before the council, before approval. And then this hardware would have been put in place and bring us to where we are today, having to pay for the, or, yeah, pay for this change order. I do not recall proving the change order for this. But there's, there's a lot of projects going on, uh, each one seems to have some change orders. So I just, I, I question the steps.
Yeah, and I can, um, the one thing I can tell you, this certainly could have been an oversight from that standpoint. This was part of the final punch list items, uh, which all kind of happened, um, a- at once, it was recommended that these items get done before they called the project complete. Uh, so that decision was made and then, uh, they pushed through on the punch list items, um, which did involve this change order.
I, I can understand, you know, even myself, I, I want this project to be completed and be nothing but a somewhat of a bad memory in the rearview mirror. But again, there's, there's steps that should have went through. It's, it's council's decision, I'm just talking.
Well, a- and I agree with your, uh, to change a project, there should be discussion before doing that. I mean, it's happened in the past, so, a- and if they already installed hardware and then they paid somebody to take the hardware off and install new hardware, that should not be on us. Because I see they've got an opening specialist, whatever he is, at twenty-five hundred dollars, which is a majority of this
Oh, I don't think.
Cost.
Had twenty-five hundred of this thirty-seven?
Yeah.
They want to get a side hustle.
This, this one's leaving a little bit of a bad
Yeah, you know, I think Thinking back, this may have been the path of least resistance with this locking mechanism. You know, it, it's sad that, you know, council put elected to go more money and, and have that, what I want to say, more, more of a secure facility, that's quicker accessibility for the, uh, the personnel. I, I would like to see us take some type of action this evening on this, whether it's to try to, I get negotiate a middle ground, because this is an air, not on the city.
Right, and.
Or we just pay it, or we just flat, I'll recheck, and I, I.
I would, I would like to see somebody step up to the plate and say, yeah, we did wrong and we're gonna chip in on this or cover it, one of the two.
Cause, you know, hearing that there's twenty-five hundred there, I, I don't know if it's being made right with the city, and it could be, there's could have been a lot more, and we're just seeing the submission of the employees.
If we could get more information, more information from them elaborating a little bit more.
Well, if the council, um, chooses to, to vote this down, I will contact Boomerang and or, uh, Shive Hattery and, uh, see what we can do.
I'm, I'm moved.
We could table it or just until we get more information, and I'll make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting. And in the meantime, find out about the breakdown and what all this entails.
Second thing.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff, to postpone slash table this until more information can be provided at any meeting, I guess, in the future. Any other discussion, council? Public comment? Penny?
Smith.
Yes.
Tukin.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Motion to postpone carries. Uh, good discussion on that, council members. Five point ten, review and approval pay request from Snyder in the amount of four thousand one hundred and four dollars for the wastewater treatment plant flow equalization project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Tukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried, five point eleven, review and approval pay request from Snyder in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars for the U S one fifty-one grade separation and roundabout project.
No, keep it through.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Stowe.
Yes.
Tukin. Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Six point zero, new business, six point one, review and approval hiring notice for city administrator and city and city clerk positions.
No, keep it through.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Teresa, council discussion. Can, can we just clarify? We're just posting or making this available to the public, is that what the motion was?
Um, yeah, essentially to, uh, prove this timetable, uh, but we have done all of those steps. Um, we're looking at a closed session probably on the twenty-third of, uh, June, um. So essentially, I just wanted to spell out kind of the timetable for this and, uh, I guess give council an idea of, um, how this is going to progress, um, at least in my mind anyways.
It could not, I'm, I'm moving on.
Um, twenty-third at six P M. I don't get back till seven on Friday nights.
Okay.
So can we move that?
Friday night?
It is a Friday night, yes, um, that meets the required notice timetable, so.
What time on Friday night?
Six P M, it's got.
I'll be out of town.
This is debatable. This is, this is just what the, uh, uh, the schedule essentially looks like before the next council meeting, um. If we had to hold it at the council meeting, we could and do, um, the closed session at the end of the council meeting or before, um, and then hold a special session after that as well. Uh, that's another possibility.
I'd, I'd be in favor of just hooking it up with the regular meeting.
Yeah, I, I think
That would help.
Yeah. Think that would be best at this point.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's, we don't need to amend this motion, it's timetable, that was likely fluid anyway.
Yes, I'll make those changes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from council?
Um, the only thing is, you're posting it on the door website.
Yes.
On Facebook.
We can, yes.
Okay. I didn't know where all you're going to post it, but.
Any public comment? Uh, just to summarize, we have a motion, Kay, second from Teresa. Penny, would you go ahead and conduct the roll roll?
Well.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Tukin.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. I still haven't even set in that there's four, and if we get through their roll a little quicker and now registering with the, six point two, update Iowa D N R letters of non-compliance for Anamosa wastewater treatment plant inspection and N P D E S general permit one, Steve Agnish.
Steve Agnish, Utility Superintendent, so on the thirtieth of May, we received a sanitary survey for the wastewater plant and then the general permit number one, um. So the things I'll talk about on the wastewater side for non-compliance is, if you remember, we, we did this survey two years ago in August, we had a sanitary survey. One of the things that was found is we needed to update the agreement with the prison. So we updated the agreement with the prison and then shortly after that, the prison deemed that the industry went away. Well, in that period of time in the beginning, there were still some violations, I'll say, where the prison exceeded uh, effluent limitations on some things, and so it shows up on us. So that's that's part of that, um, we had one sample of our total suspended solids that was over our permit limits during the, the two-year period. Um, the other thing, design with influence capacity, uh, design capacities, we're obviously working on the E Q basin. We're a little ways from having that done. And then, um, I guess the biggest thing that they kind of got us on is, there's a couple of tanks at the end of the process that are not used anymore. But the effluent, when it leaves the plant, runs through those tanks and they got some vegetation growing in them because it slows down and duckweed and stuff like that grows in it. And we just basically, we need to eliminate it, so I'm working to try to get what I can do through the D N R to just have these two tanks removed because we're never going to use them again, because we're not going to go back to chlorine gas. So it's a
Simple as bypassing them?
Yeah, basically what we'll have to do is we'll have to get a permit to do work at the wastewater plant through the D N R and then have somebody come in and dig a trench, put in about sixty feet of pipe and then bust the tanks out and then fill them in. Is basically what we need to do, and then we won't have to worry about this again, and it's over and done with, so. That's the only things that we have on the wastewater plant side. The general permit number one, I, I did not know this existed, I did not know we had one, I had no documentation that I had stumbled across since I've been there, that we had this permit, so basically what this is, it's just a stormwater permit for the footprint of the wastewater plant. We need to get, um, they give us a deadline of We need to get, um, they give us a deadline of basically a month. That we had to have a. A stormwater pre- prevention plan, I believe is what it is in place. So we, I got with H R Green to help us get this in place and the documents done, that's, that was the biggest thing that we got. Hit on is because we didn't have the SWIP plan. For the wastewater plant, so. Once we get those done, then we'll be back in compliance again, so. Questions?
Is this something that's, that's done every year?
Every two years, they come inspect the wastewater plant every two years for a sanitary survey, the stormwater. Is, I, I don't know the. The, the duration on that and then they'll come do the water plant every three years, so.
So there's not compliance found this time as well as last time?
Yes, yes, uh, there was a lot more found last time. I, I feel really good after this inspection. So.
So will you add the documentation done by July seventh?
I'm gonna be as close as I can, H R Green is on it, they know, they, they were given the go-ahead today to get it going and they know what the deadline is, so. They told me that they should be able to do it, if, if not. Um, Michelle, the person from the D N R said, as, as long as I communicate, hey, we're close. I need another week or something, she said, that's not a big deal. So, but we're shooting for the seven.
Just keep us from getting any fines from them.
Yes, I will do my best, so.
So would it be considered these non-compliances, would it be a very low in a sense classification of the non-compliance?
I, I think so, yes.
So no black guy, maybe just a little scuff on the cheek?
Yes, yes, that's what I think it is, because like I said, part of it is. That stuff from the prison. And now that that's all gone, we're not even testing for that stuff anymore. So, you know, we don't, we don't have that with the, with the prison anymore. Once we get the E Q basin up, that'll take care of some of the, um, exceeding the influit design flow. And some of the other things, so. The by, any of the bypasses that we have, it should be able to also hopefully consume that too, and then we won't have those. So.
That does sound like it could be a little on the expensive side.
The, the E Q basin will be, yes.
Yeah, yeah, with the bypass.
The, well, no, that, it, that really isn't expensive, it'll just, when the E Q basin is in place. The surge of rainwater will get pumped into that basin.
Was referring to the trench, the, the sixty.
Oh, oh, that piece.
Yes.
That's good.
I.
That, that shouldn't be that bad because they're, because I was down there the other day and. And it's on its route to the river, so it's just maybe gonna be swing out and swing around where those.
Yeah, where those tanks are.
Tanks are.
And then, then we'll just demo them.
And it's really kind of surprising because that water is flowing through there, but. For whatever reason, in those certain spots that where things are growing.
Yep.
So, you know, it's, it's not like it's just dead water, it's gnawing through there.
Yep, it's flowing through, it's, it's just moving slow enough that it's growing, so.
Council, anything else on this, it's just, it was just an update, so there's no action here. Uh, but Steve, I do appreciate you jumping into this with your lunch pail to get, get all these resolved in a very timely manner.
I'll do my best and like I told Jeremiah, you know, if you guys remember, I give you the sanitary survey last time when it happened. We get a sanitary survey, I'm, I'm gonna bring it to council so you guys know what's going on, so.
That's good, good open communication. Six point three discussion and possible action, purchase of. The borrow pump from utilities department for utilities department. And in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars plus freight, Steve Agnish. I'll go and tell it, go ahead and tell me how bad I want you to.
So what this is, is this is one of the pumps that go in the influit well, I wanna have a spare one sitting there, so we always have four pumps in there all the time. So if one goes down for whatever, it's gotta be taken to the shop and repaired, I have one that we can just drop in and keep the rotation going.
So is this the only place that supplies that?
This, yes, they are the, yeah, they are the supplier for us.
These match what we currently have there?
Yep, this is what we're, this is what we have there.
How many times has the pump gone down in the last year that you had to dump one in?
Oh, let's see, one, two, three. At least three times, I currently have one out. Right now, as of no fault of the cities, there was a, uh, we had purchased a pump. Last summer, fall, I don't remember when we purchased it, but anyway, got it put in and running and the power cable. Shorted out internally right at the top of the pump, so it's, it's all warranty. So it's, they just, they come, it, it shorted out, I, I called Mississippi Valley Pump, they come, pulled the pump. Took it down, checked it out, that's what they found, the power cable shorted out, it's in the warranty period, so doesn't cost us a thing, so. So if I would've had this spare, I would've put this one in and so we would kept our rotation going the way we like to keep the pumps rotated, so.
Verify you would, you have three in use all the time?
We have four pumps in the station and one to two run all the time, but every twenty-four hours it rotates the lead. So. To keep, to keep equal hours on all the pumps.
And this one would be a spare to the full?
Yes, this would be a spare sitting on the, sitting in the building right there, so that way if something goes down to one of them, then we can just. We can pull it, swap it, and we can be up to full capacity at all times, I, I, I eventually wanna do this for all the lift stations too. I would like to have a spare pump sitting there, I just haven't got that far. So that way, if we have a pump that goes down, we can pull the one off the shelf, take it to the lift station wherever it's at. Put it in and maintain full capacity at all times.
System can sustain itself on three running when one goes down?
It can, yes. But the problem then becomes if you would happen to have it in this lift station. If you would happen to have a second one go down, then you might run into problems.
Well, how? What kind of a supply do they have for pumps? So like if, if we did get down to three, could you get one in? In a day, two days, three days, a week?
No, even, even if you have to, nine times out of ten, obviously, as you look at this one, it's, if you order a new one, it's ten to twelve weeks out. If you take this same pump down there and you get it rebuilt, nine times out of ten, you're three to five weeks out getting the parts in. So.
Where's down there?
Um, Mississippi Valley Pump is out of Bettendorf.
Oh, thank you.
Steve, I can probably ask you this tomorrow, but you mentioned the other lift stations, are the pumps, uh, that you're getting or wanting to get for there the same?
No.
The different?
No, every lift station has a different size pump in it. The lift stations are the, all the same in the lift station. But due to the size of the different lift stations and the location in town. The pumps are not the same size, I, I can't have one pump and then have it fit three stations, it just, it doesn't work that way, nothing's designed that way.
How old are the current pumps that we got?
That I, two of them are new. Two of them are brand new, uh, there's one other pump that's in the lift station that is brand new. And then obviously the one that is in, um, Bettendorf right now, they had, the, the cord, uh, cables shorted out. The other two, I'm not for sure how old they are. I don't know when they were put in.
Do you know what a life expectancy is on these pumps?
A lot of it depends on use, but I would say if you, which I've tried to do is I try to get, uh. Mississippi Valley Pump up once a year to go through, pull the pumps, inspect the oil, you know, a good pump running a lot should last. Two years before it might have to have an oil change and then it might be three years before it has to be overhauled. Possibly, it been, a lot of it depends on what it's pumping. What, you know, where it's at in the system.
If it takes ten to twelve weeks to get here, it'll be after July one when it would get here. If so, it would be next year's budget.
Next year's budget, yep. It'd be just no, it'd be no different than my regular repairs that we used last year, comes out of the same light items for repairs.
Three hundred dollars additional freight, would you estimate?
Something like that. Cause it weighs. Four hundred, five hundred pounds. It's, it's a pretty good sized pump, it's saying about this tall.
The council entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Any additional discussion? Public comment? Penny, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Toucan?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried six point four discussion and possible action. Purchase of Bobcat lawnmower for utilities department in the amount of four thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Eleven thousand nine twenty-seven sixteen, less seventy-five hundred dollar trade-in. Um, Steve Agnish.
So. Is this the only quote you got? For a lawnmower?
For the, for the Bobcat zero turn, it's, it's, they're the only dealer that sells them for us.
But did you get quotes for any other lawnmowers?
No, I did not, the reason I didn't is because we're trying to keep the zero turns the same, so we can keep the like parts on the shelf.
Well, because the purchasing policy says that you will go out and get multiple bids for any equipment irregardless. So I'm just going off the purchasing policy.
Okay, I.
We need to do that.
Okay, um, but if it's, if you're going for one piece of equipment and you don't have any other dealers. What am I supposed to do is my question then?
Yeah, I don't care if you get a quote from a John Deere or Cub Cadet, but. We need more than just.
Okay.
From this.
Okay.
In, in my opinion, cause that's what the policy states.
Do you say, where's the seventy-five hundred dollars coming in?
That's.
They're switching around here.
So what we were proposing to do was take the tractor that we don't need, we don't need a tractor.
Twenty fifteen John Deere?
Right. We don't need the tractor style mower, we just need two zero turns, that's all we need. So we were proposing to give that one to Shane and take one of his older, uh, tractors that has. It's in your, has eleven hundred hours on it, eleven hundred and sixty-four hours on it, and we would trade that one in. And then Shane would have our tractor that has four hundred and twenty hours on it. So that was the.
Not that old though, you're getting seventy-five hundred for trading on it, right, what year's that one, the one coming to streets?
Uh, we need to fifteen and they're twenty-five thousand dollars. You don't pay that, but that's what they are.
Rich makes a good point on the first aid policy. And aside from that. I just. From a citizen's standpoint, as far as what people are paying for taxes and what they're paying for utilities. I don't know that, it seems like we're buying a lot of equipment. It would be nice, but. It, to me, it seems like more of a, a want than a need, I mean, this is. Pretty nice equipment and your average taxpayer put in the bill does not have equipment this nice, I mean, I have a. Consider new, I have a twenty, twenty-eleven, uh, mower that I still consider pretty new and that's. Uh, just how I see it and citizens' standpoint, it's. We have a pretty nice fleet and not sure it needs to be that nice.
Well, we were trying to shorten our time by getting a zero, another zero turn, so we were free to do other things. Because, you know, it's not as efficient with the tractor. And since we don't, like I said, since we don't do the rough cemetery, we don't need a four-wheel drive tractor. We figured that if we give that to Shane, take one of his older ones and trade it in before it blows up, it would be a. A win for him.
How many hours will we do now?
I don't know, what do we spend?
I'm sorry, what?
Depends on what we have, we're helping, we'll help Shane down cemetery alone. We'll assemble five hundred one minus one, or if I'm going down top cemetery. Get all the money on the ground, if I just want my stuff, it takes two thousand four hours, four, four to six hours. To loan with the four more guys and zero fifty. If I'm helping Shane, I can loan over fifteen hundred. It's all the time that you owe. I got six four, or no, sixteen nine.
Cause what you're doing is you're doing water and wastewater, so all the lift stations, that's part of this mower, right?
It's doing, primarily it's doing everything around the, the water. The wastewater plant has just a, a really small little footprint and the Shane takes care of, since he's right there anyway. Yeah, it's a, it's a steep little section.
So you do the, the lift stations then?
We do the tower lift station and then Shane, you, you hit, uh, around Second Street. Yeah, that, those two are, so.
I really do think we need to adhere to our purchasing policy.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we put that in place for a reason years ago that I think we need to. To follow it as best as we can, I know sometimes there's emergencies, but this doesn't classify as an emergency.
Yep, I can get two more, I can get two more quotes, no big deal.
Okay.
Okay.
No big deal.
Well, again, to remain consistent this evening, if you get a motion to postpone. Until we have three. Bids.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Teresa. Further council discussion. Public comment? Benny?
South?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Toucan?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Motion to postpone carried six point five discussion and possible action, purchase of excavator. Purchase of excavator trailer for utilities department in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Of which twenty two, five fifty. Minus seven thousand trade in, Steve Ignish.
We need a heavier trailer to pull for the excavator. Is what it boils down to. We're right at the weight limit of twenty four thousand. With the excavator and the attachments on the trailer. Also, the back of the trailer is not built heavy enough. That when we load and unload the excavator, it's starting to tweak it a little bit. And we have found a heavier trailer. That we'd like to purchase for it.
So I'm taking it, we kind of put the. Cart before the horse and buying the trailer years ago.
Yeah, whoever bought, yeah, when that was purchased before, it should, should have been the next size bigger. Good news is we, we got. That trailer costs seventy, seven hundred dollars. I believe it was, and. For the one that we wanna. Buy, they'll give us seven thousand for trade, so. We'll basically get our money back.
So the current one is we're finding a way, it's the best, is there any way we could repair the, the ramps or the backend?
No, no, it's all in design of the trailer. And one of the things that we want to change. The current trailer has narrow, well, I don't know if you have the packet. There's, there's a couple of pictures in there and the second picture is. The. Escavator sitting on there and you can see the real narrow ramps. The trailer that we're purchasing has what they call the gorilla or monster ramps on it. They go, one goes all the way across. And they're twice as heavy as these are, so it'll take the abuse.
How many times a week do you think this thing gets loaded or moved on average?
Just, it just depends. Sometimes it might go a couple of weeks before we use it and then it'll be used three or four times a week. It, it just depends upon. What's up for the day?
Well, one thing I asked you or my a couple of weeks ago for. A cost analysis on the use of that backhoe. That. I think we probably ought to take a look at. Before we decide on the trailer. To know, is it paying for itself? And if it's paying for itself, maybe buying the trailer to haul it then would help. If it's not paying for itself, then maybe we just get rid of both.
Cause we're not doing exclusive digging. I mean, I, I see, see Boomerang doing stuff, we said it still, it's, we're not doing.
No, we're. The only thing that, that Boomerang has done for the city. Was we had a water main that got hit this spring. By a lion. Because the locate was off. And I did not have the right people here that day. So we couldn't do it. So it was just me and then it was basically the junior staff that are not as knowledgeable. Robert was gone that day, Curtis was gone that day, kind of the key players in this. So I couldn't do it myself. With the staff, cause we haven't had the chance to get him fully trained. So that is, that is the only thing that Boomerang has done for us. All the other water main breaks that we've had and hydrants and valves, we've, we've done ourselves. So I, I don't know where you're getting that.
That's what I'm referring to. I mean, I saw him doing work for that, so I just wondered.
That was the only one and that's, that's the reason why, is because like I said, I did not have. The key staff here and I have not had the ability, we're working on it. Trying to get everybody brought up to speed. So.
What's the maximum distance you ever have to haul?
Across town.
Couple of miles and.
Yeah.
Trailer. Stay equipped with the backhoe and all the attachments.
Yep.
It's storage.
Yep.
And we are not exceeding. The twenty four thousand, but we're right at the threshold.
We're right at the threshold. And you can, you can see the back flex and twist. When you drive it. Up and on. The back and I'm afraid, we, we have a good trailer now that we can trade it in. It has good value now. I would just as soon not break it and then have a piece of junk to. You know, take to the scrapyard instead of. Trading the trailer in, so.
Appreciate your preventive thinking.
Yes, I agree with Rich. I'd like to see the numbers, how much we're using this thing. Before we go ahead. With the purchase. It's kind of.
It has a hundred and sixty four hours on it. I can tell you that right now.
Can I take that statement as a motion to postpone, Jeff?
Yes. I'll second that.
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich, postpone table. The more details. On this time study. Any other council discussion? Public comment? Benny?
Smith?
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Stout?
Yeah.
Motion to postpone carried. Six point six discussion of possible action, purchase of replacement sewer camera system. For utilities department, Steve Ignish.
So the current camera was purchased, was originally sold in two thousand eight. And I'm assuming it was sold to Dyersville, cause I know that's where the city bought it from. It is now obsolete. Parts are almost impossible to get it for. They're not stocking them and there's a lot of stuff, they didn't tell me what that you, you can't get for it. So.
This is the one we currently have is a two thousand and eight model.
That's when it was sold brand new, yes. I don't know when the city purchased it. That I can't, I don't know, that was before my time.
Something was all that long ago that we purchased that.
At this point in time, could be five years ago now.
It could be.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Or six, I, I really don't know. But it's been probably longer than person thinks.
Have that re- early or the cost for the replacement? Can you just?
That one is uh, one hundred and fourteen, six seventy three and thirteen cents.
Fourteen K.
Hundred and, yeah, hundred and fourteen thousand. Six thirty seven thirteen.
And that, does that include all training? And retro fitting and everything?
Yep, that's, we'll take our trailer to. Uh, Ankeny to the shop. They will pull the old equipment out. They will retrofit the trailer for the new camera trailer, bring it down and I think it was two days. Let's see.
It says two days of training.
Yeah, then two days of training. Here.
Did you have uh, this amount in your budget for next year?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Uh, what? How often has this gone like sets offline for usage? Now needing repair that you.
The, the last time that we had it. Um. We took it down because we got the, the cable broke.
It's on stop.
Yeah, well, the cable. I don't know if it got caught or it just fatigue and it, when they were, was trying to pull it out. We had to uh, we broke the cable. Out by on, on Old Dubuque Road. And it was before the excavator, then we had to have Boomerang come in and they had to dig up the sewer line and get the camera out for us. Um. We then took it to Ankeny, they was able to splice the end on it, but we lost almost two hundred foot of cable. And the cable is my understanding is one of the things that we can't get now. So we're two hundred foot short on cable. Um. We're having problems, so when, before you put the camera in. You have to take a lick, a little CO two cartridge. And you have to put the air in the camera to keep the seals and to keep the water from coming in and it's leaking out. Faster now. And we are struggling when we do use it to, to uh. Get enough camera before we have to refill it. So. The new camera is actually, would be a little lighter than the current one. But it's just an upgraded model. So.
So how often are you going out? And I know, I think you said twenty, you want to try to do twenty percent. Camering per year or something?
Yes, we trying to do twenty percent, we trying to jet. And camera twenty percent of the town every year.
So what's that equate to like one day a week? Um, two days a week, what?
Yeah, one, one to two days a week, just depends when we. The time some, and it might not be every week. Just depends on when we get the jetter out, cause we like to go out, jet the line first. So then it's clean and then take the camera, follow up.
Yeah. Cause it seemed to me like before we got this. We were having Dyersville come down and. Do the camel work and that was at, at the mercy of whenever they could do it.
We were swapping jetter use.
Yeah.
Camera.
What? Long as events, we stopped spotting with Dyers. In a couple of years.
It's been several years.
Yeah, we uh.
I would assume probably when you bought the camera.
Before we purchased the camera from the. Train. Which could be right, five years, it just.
I think it might even be longer than that now. But it seemed like part of it was to, they may have. We didn't uh, bill them for some of the jetter work for a long time and then all of a sudden they got a big bill and. I think that might have ended that too.
That camera trailer showed up uh, when I got here in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, six years.
Well, where are we at with this?
Unfortunately. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion. Second by K. Further council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve, carried. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Six point seven discussion of possible action. Purchase of twenty fifteen John Deere tractor mower. Four Streets Department in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Uh, which is thirteen, four fifty one minus three thousand, seven hundred and fifty trade in. Shane Brown.
Good, good evening, everybody. Shane Brown, Street Super superintendent. Um, this tractor has sixteen hundred hours on it. Um, we are, we traded another one um. To Bobcat or to um. Telefire equipment for a Massey. Um, and I didn't trade anything there because we sold the. Last lawnmower down to Highway sixty four auctions. Um, and that one also had a ton of hours. Um. I did get a quote from Bobcat, but not to trade. Cause at one point I was going to take it to Highway sixty four and just dump it down there. Um, and then I got a quote from John Deere. And that was not to trade either. And they were still higher than um. Like two thousand dollars higher than. Than Massey Ferguson. And Massey Ferguson has a five year powertrain warranty. Would you, if something goes wrong with that rear end and four wheel drive, it's covered. John Deere did not have that. Um, this would not come until after July, probably. Um, he actually said it might be closer to August. The Bobcat tractor that I did, um, well, they quoted me was. Um, about six thousand there. For the same truck. I did not bring it out tonight, I guess, I'm sorry. And this would come out of road use tax of equipment operation.
How many hours can you expect to get out of that?
Right now we got a little over sixteen hundred on the one I want to trade.
I know, but. I mean, you said that already, but. What's the potential, how many?
Seventeen. Eighteen if you're lucky. We're mowing a ton. We mow a ton a week. We need those, you know, we need those four wheel drives from that cemetery and other parts of town and stuff. We're just trying to. This one was bought in fifteen, or it was built in fifteen. Believe they got it just before. They got it like spring of sixteen. It was supposed to be a cemetery tractor only, I spent a lot of time on it for three years. Now we've got other guy going. A lot to know.
So this, this item is actually for the purchase of a. Massey tractor.
Yep, massive.
Not, not. Because the action item is purchase of a two thousand fifteen John Deere.
Yeah.
We per, it was supposed to be, we purchased it in fifteen. Not buying a John Deere.
It's supposed to be to replace it.
Right.
Is what you're.
Yeah, I was supposed to replace it.
So this is Massey new or used?
Brand new. We have one uh, that we just got this spring. Um, and it is night and day different. I mean, it's a lot nicer tractor. Does a great job mowing. Climbs our hills good. Nobody scared to fall off of them yet.
And where else did you get quotes from?
Bobcat. And John Deere. And they were both higher. By a lot. And neither one of them had the five year powertrain warranty.
It's running six seven, it's twenty fifteen, wasn't this? Was discussed the, a buy-in from. Utilities? Did I get that wrong?
No, this is a different tractor. This is a seven fifty eight John Deere. Utilities has got a ten twenty three. John Deere, which is bigger.
Sorry, we got a lot of lawnmowers.
Oh, I know, it's crazy, isn't it?
You're, you're gonna take. You're, you're gonna take the twenty fifteen John Deere ten twenty three.
Nope, seven fifty eight.
From the Streets Department.
Yep.
They're gonna give you this. From water. You're gonna take the current twenty fifteen John Deere you have and trade it off on a mass.
I'm going to, okay. So the ten twenty three that they're gonna trade of mine, I'm getting their ten twenty three with, it's not on here. Their ten twenty three from the Water Department only has four hundred and some hours on it. I want to put more hours on it before we trade it. Okay, so I have a seven fifty eight four wheel drive. It's a mid-sized tractor. And I'm going to replace it with another mid-sized tractor.
The, the seven hundred series?
Seven hundred.
Is this is a twenty fifteen John?
Yes. And it has sixteen hundred and some hours on it.
Where is the Massey dealer?
Dyersville Island. And they carry all the parts.
So again, the ten twenty three is being, that's what's being traded in at your old one?
The seven fifty eight we're trading in.
Yeah, it's written on that. The seven fifty eight traded in.
Yep. For thirty seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And the ten twenty three is what you'd be getting from utilities?
Yes. To put more hours on.
We bought that one.
Oh yeah, you tabled that one, so we know. Isn't this confusing?
So essentially six point seven can't really go through because it's contingent on.
No, this is a different tractor.
But as it read, the agenda read person twenty fifteen John Deere tractor.
Yeah, this could be, uh, the agenda item itself could be amended. I thought this was a John Deere tractor, but it's a Massey tractor. Um. I guess it is confusing just a little bit as they've already said. Basically, they were going to take. Uh, one tractor mower, give it to Streets Department to get a new Bobcat for um water wastewater. This is a separate agenda item. Um. I guess it does not negate the, that former agenda item that there would be a trade going on. But this is in addition to that. So essentially. If voted yes on a prior agenda item, Streets would have got the traded John Deere from water wastewater. Then he would also, and is requesting to trade this one and get another uh Massey tractor.
But since the previous one was tabled, this can't really factor in the trade. Right?
It can.
It can because it's a totally different tractor.
Yeah. Just. Shane, I guess I have to. I do have to say that. If I'm seeing and understanding this right, you would be getting rid of the twenty fifteen John Deere.
Yes.
Even though it has six hundred, sixteen hundred hours.
Yes.
And you're getting. Could potentially get a twenty fifteen John Deere. But you're sorry, I understand that.
No, no, this one is traded for a Massey.
This one. But if the streets or if the utilities gets theirs, they're still giving you one.
But I have one too. I also have a ten twenty three that has more hours on it than theirs.
So this will give you three.
We're swapping.
This will give you three four-wheel drive mowers.
It would give me. Yes, but I already have four four-wheel drive mowers, five four-wheel drive mowers now. Now four.
I think it should be tabled in a future being spell out specific miles, hours, years, because this is extremely hard to, to.
Well, and, and if I'm looking at this correctly, then the tractor you're getting from water wastewater. The ten twenty three only has about four hundred and fifty hours on it.
Mm-hmm.
Compared to yours that has.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Well, it had twelve hundred hours on it. That was what we was gonna trade it about.
So you were, you were gonna trade in. Their ten twenty three.
Yep, and I was.
Is that correct?
Their ten twenty.
And you were replacing their ten twenty three.
No.
No, 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 no.
Right, he's, he's keeping your ten twenty three, you're taking his ten twenty three and trading it in.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Didn't mean to make this a confusing ordeal. Uh. We are just trying to figure out the best way. To um. Because my fleet still needs, I was either gonna have to get rid of my ten twenty three and my seven fifty eight. Because they're both the oldest, older ones, and they're both ones with the most hours. But they had their ten twenty three, which doesn't have any hours. I mean, that'd be like a. Four-year, three-year-old machine. Uh, but. It made sense to put more hours on theirs. And then trade them in, in a year or two, trade that one in a year or two. Otherwise, we're gonna be trading a lot of lawnmowers quickly. Or not.
Yeah, we, if we would have instead of giving ours to Shane. We could have traded for about two thousand dollars. We could have bought a brand new, you know, mower. And then Shane would have had to spend. Something to buy another new tractor. If we would just, if we would just take our tractor and trade it ourselves. You know, then Shane would have to buy two. So we was trying to help him out by giving him a tractor with less hours.
Trains.
Was. One comes out of left pocket, the other one comes out of the right pocket. They're both coming out of our pockets. But I do, I can, I can follow your, there's a method to your madness, I can follow it.
Yeah, it, it took a while to get there.
Sorry, yeah.
But. I'm, I'm starting to understand what you're doing, how you're playing the shell game. But.
I do. I have heard in the last few months. On a several residents in town. I don't know why the city doesn't get out of the lawnmower business because we're purchasing it off a lot of them. So they are, they are aware of the expenditures and, you know, Jeff alluded to it earlier here this evening.
Well, I got that quote too, and it was a hundred and sixty thousand to do the, just my stuff, a couple of things of theirs. A year.
We're, we're purchasing a lot along.
Well, the, the thing on top of that is. Then we're putting full-time employees on top of those lawnmowers.
Yeah.
Which I think we could get by with seasonal employees if that's what we're gonna do.
Our, our highest paid labor scale.
I, I, I agree. I mean, we've been talking about four and kind of ducked, but I mean, if you take on average overspending on. What we're buying for mowers and. And maintenance and benefits and wages and. I would really like to see it. I know, we got one quote from one person, but true, there's a lot of companies out there. We were having our highest paid people riding the mower and I just.
I called three, I called three or four businesses and Culvers was one of them and they said they would not come to get them themselves. I called Mengers. He was a hundred and sixty thousand a year. I called one more. And he was in that almost hundred thousand range, within two thousand bucks. I mean, we got, we've got, uh, I've got part-time guys on them now. I've got some full-time guys on them now. I've got two inmates that can have shown that they can drive two now. We've got them on them. I mean, we're, we're outdoing. But you still, in this town, you still have to, even though you're a boss or a certain person of that. You still have to get on the end of a weed eater. And you still have to go out and water flowers and you still have to go and do the meetings that. You guys, you know, we, we have to go to. This isn't Cedar Rapids where the boss can sit and, and uh. In his office all day and, and get on a computer and just tell people where to, I do tell people where to go, but. We're, we're still saving the city a ton of money.
Well, a, and I get that Shane, I really do, and I appreciate that you're out there working with everybody. But. It's still. I think we would be better served using more part-time help for the mowing and having you guys do. You know, the harder, more professional things that need to be done. Whether that's digging the holes or whatever, patching the streets or whatever, instead of. Sitting on a lawnmower.
But you also have to have reliability of them mowers. If they're down two, three weeks waiting for parts. That's just two, three days longer on a mower. You're gonna have that whole roundabout out there to mow. Have you seen, have you been on County Home Road? They don't mow them. They look horrible. There's gonna be a trail out there that's gonna take a mower too.
There's a thing where we would be in but more mowers and more works, and I just.
I, I think once we get down to the having good mowers and reliability. It won't be like this, but these mowers were bought twenty fifteen, this zero turn that is next on the agenda. That's at twenty ten with seventeen hundred hours on it. They don't even trade those. Because they know the life expectancy of a gas motor is probably gonna blow. And, uh, the other day, we were pretty sure it was gonna blow. I mean, we're just trying to get it to where we're not buying. Rear ends, four-wheel drives that we know we gotta have that fire station up there. That is so steep, that's gonna be four-wheel drive all the time. I mean. I'm trying to be. Well, I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can. This mower was sixteen thousand. We're getting it for nine. Uh, Jeff Mager told me he can't buy a mower for nine thousand dollars. He has to pay full price. So does Culvers. So does all the other guys because we get state bid. These zero turns are fourteen, I think, brand new.
You're technically getting it to thirteen.
Yeah, you, you get, you save, you know. Three, four thousand bucks. The zero, the um. Where's the full price? I think our quote is on there. So for that zero turn, that Bobcat zero turn. And the reason we did that was is because, uh, last year when we got the Bobcat for. The LCC. And for me. And the Water Department Hustler was higher. And so was, who else did I quote? John Deere, and they were both higher. That's why we're sticking with these, these lawnmowers. We can get parts for these lawnmowers and keep the parts on our shelves. They all intermix. That saves us a ton of running to North Liberty or Cedar Rapids or MacOquodre or wherever. If we can get the same stuff, we're not running P and K. And that was a frustration too. When I came here, I would run to Mount Vernon to get parts and you'd give them the part numbers and you would come home with the wrong parts. We went with a little bit reliable, a more reliable like Bobcat Cedar Rapids. I can call them and say, I need this part. And they'll set it on the shelf or set it off to the side. Same way with Helly's and Dyersville. When I call them. They'll, if they got a guy coming down this way, they'll drop the parts off. If not, we'll go get them, you know, and we make more stops. But what I'm, what we're doing now is we're waiting for parts for John Deere. On these, on the seven fifty eight, we had a leaky four-wheel drive. It took them seven weeks to get us the parts. We can't do that because we have to add oil every day. We're, we're to that point. I mean. Uh, so my, the last boss here, uh, Greg Carpenter, he bought all these mowers. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, whenever he started. We're just trying to upgrade because they've, they've hit their life expectancy. We don't mow Jeff's yard and it takes what, an hour and a half to mow your yard? Every mower is mowing every. Two days, sixteen hours, it's getting the full sixteen hours. It's not like me going home, I mow for two hours and then we're done for that week. They're seeing, they're seeing three times the hours is. Your personal ones. When we bring them lawnmowers in in the winter. We wash and we wax and we clean and we, and we do what we gotta do to them to make them look nice. So we can get these nice, um. Nice looking, you know, so we look nice looking going down the road. We got thirty seven hundred dollars worth of trade in. I thought it was because the steering wheel was loose. No, it was because the deck shot. The steering is loose. I don't know what it's gonna cost to fix it. Right now we don't have any leaks. But we're spending, we're starting to spend a lot of time on the road going to get parts. And that's what I want to get away from. For maybe five, six years. Maybe we can get by for six years. I don't know. But right now we're five years with seventeen hundred hours on a lawnmower. And sixteen hundred on another one, seventeen fifty five, I'm sorry. They look nice. I swear to God, they look nice, but we wash and wax and the guys take care of them. We grease them up and we do what we gotta do. To make town look nice. And I think we're doing a pretty good job making town look pretty nice.
How many mowers have we bought this year?
One.
Just one?
I replay, yep, I replaced the Simplicity. That was a twenty ten. It was bought from Edens. And it had almost eighteen hundred hours on it. And now all we'd like to do is upgrade again from. Whatever sixteen hundred hours to something with a five-year warranty. So they'll cover it. All of your blades and tires and that kind of stuff, but.
Well, if I'm looking at, at your. Mower list. You, it looks like you had. A mower purchased in two thousand ten, one in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then skipped until two thousand twenty-two. You had a five-year gap.
Yep.
That sound right?
Yep, I believe so.
And then you hit twenty-two and twenty-three.
We bought it, we're replacing the fifteen this year. And we're gonna be able to one the next two years, probably again.
So the, so the twenty sixteen has a cab on it. That one does not have a lot of hours on it. That one's gonna be expensive to replace, so we are using it to mow. We take cab off. But I'm not thinking I'll replace that till twenty twenty-five or six. That's my hope. Just to get it away from everything else. Because it only has like nine hundred hours on it.
And you use that one in one hour time, don't you?
Use that in one hour time, yep. That one's handy.
Can you say six more than sixteen hours a week? Each mower getting sixteen hour a week.
Yep.
About utilities, how many more? How many hours did you say? Did you say, Steve?
We're two mowers and we put six hours a week. We're just doing our stuff on each mower. If we help Shane.
But in total. In, in total, it's. Twenty-two hours a week.
There's a second, like the board we bought last year for others to find you out.
Well, it looks, it looks like on your inventory sheet, you had forty-seven hours on it, on the inventory sheet.
And mine should have had a hundred and something on that, yeah. And mine should have had a hundred and something on that, yeah.
Granted, you had, oh, because last year was a pretty dry year. This year's been a pretty dry spring.
Yeah.
So the grass has been growing, growing slow.
Yeah, your Bob K, you got two oh nine.
Two oh nine on it. So that was one year, cuz I bought that last year.
We have a hundred nineteen hours on the, our Bobcat that we bought last year.
And I have two hundred and ten, you said?
You had two oh nine.
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine, whatever day this sheep was done, whenever it was done.
And moved seven months out of here.
And you said you've got how much now? Hundred, hundred nineteen? So you've added about seventy hours. Since when was this?
Yeah.
That was?
Um, I don't know when that one was done, maybe earlier this year.
I was gonna say, some of the, um, some of the numbers on there would have been. Um, March, May, maybe February.
Okay, so. Prior to, maybe some prior to the season.
A few of them, yeah.
Probably close, well, this was forty-seven. If you're at one nineteen, you did seventy.
This, are there hours on there for the ten twenty-three version?
Per year? Yeah, four twenty-six.
In mine should be about twelve.
Okay, so you added twenty-six.
We, we try not to use that much. It's not as easy to mow as that.
Yeah. And what'd you say Shane?
Mine should have a little over twelve, I would've said a little over twelve hundred on mine.
Well, your ten twenty-three was at eleven forty-nine.
Yeah, yeah. Almost twelve on it, I believe.
Again, this would be, you, you, your fleet currently consists of four, four-wheel drive mowers.
Yes. And two zero turns.
How many hours you spend in the cemetery?
Hmm, eight.
Eight hours a week.
And.
That's just on a mower?
On a four-wheel drive mower, right?
Everybody gets eight, about eight hours on every.
In the cemetery.
In the cemetery, yes.
Plus thirty-two hours.
No, it's. Eight Monday, eight Tuesday.
But when you're saying eight, is that just one person or is that?
Every mower, so I have six mowers, so it's. Eight times, yes. For the town.
That's for the town.
That's the town and the cemetery together.
Forty-eight hours you're going on a mower and that forty-eight hours are paid man hours per week for everything, those streets.
But that's on a mower, that's not including.
The weeding.
The weed eating. Cuz I noticed that you must, you must do the cemetery mow two times in between weed eating.
Depends on if it's growing or not.
Well, it's, it needs it.
Yeah. We were gonna do it this week, so.
Well, it needs it more often than that. Just gonna say that.
How many hours a week do you spend? Weed is every other, so it's hundred percent, but you could do every, every other.
Eight, eight hours.
So it's like sixteen every two?
Well, okay, let me ask you this. Steve, since you're up there, how many hours a week are you on a mower?
Myself?
Well, no, just your department.
We spend about six hours, two people.
A week.
A week.
So in reality. We could take one of your mowers and let street department use it on the other four days.
Depending. One more, another nature does.
Right, but I mean, you're not on it eight hours for five days. So there is a possibility that instead of. Maybe instead of having every department have mowers, we just need to have. Uh, like a motor pool of mowers that. Gets used by everybody.
You will not have a four-wheel drive though.
We, we, we don't have a need for a four-wheel drive. That's what we wanted to.
We have to make sure.
Right.
Shane has.
We gotta make sure there's certain elements to this. But if we've got mowers that are idle. That could be utilized.
Maybe we could have the streets department pick up some. Granted, not on the four-wheel drive side, but. You know, not mowing cemetery, not mowing the fire station. Maybe there's other places they could pick up.
Well, if you plug in.
Grease your teams. Uh, time on a mower.
So if you plug in forty-eight hours just in streets, the morning, eight hours a week, that's fifty-six hours. I just figured the mowing of the mowing year, probably about thirty weeks of the year of mowing. And you plug in twenty dollars an hour. I mean, that's not, I'm not just picking that kind of average. That's about thirty-four thousand a year. And if we're buying a mower on average of once a year, that puts us. That's not, we usually, that puts us probably over fifty thousand a year, just in mowing and mower. Must not include insurance or IFRS or that's.
Well, and it doesn't include maintenance.
So I mean, it's.
But even at that, then if the bid was, would you say a hundred and sixty?
Still a bargain.
Didn't you say one was closer to a hundred?
Around a hundred and five, I believe.
That's for everything or just center?
No, that was bouncing around town. And Culvers wouldn't even come to town. Cuz I called him cuz. They're close.
About before.
Yeah, they're close, but he said no way in heck they're coming. Okay.
Well, geez.
I know, it was, it was pretty point blank and he hung up the phone.
They still come and mow other people's yards.
I don't know.
So, so it's, the hours per week, that's include like everybody in the streets at some point, mows it, that's. You know, you could say how many hours is you, how many hours is everybody with us?
I don't know nearly as much as I used to, which is sad.
I mean, I just like, I just like no real, like, on a given week, guy A is mowing. This many hours, guy B, and, and see with all the benefits, what that cost is for the week and just.
Or right now I have two part-time guys on them, so they don't make, if they make fifteen dollars, we're doing good.
Oh, that's good.
And then I got two inmates that make, what, five sixty a day? Each one. So I mean.
Yeah.
We're starting to pick up some of the slack to where we can do some other things.
More of those guys.
I can't name more.
But that brings your fifty thousand dollars down.
I was just arbitrarily picking, yeah, twenty dollars.
I mean, you're gonna have, so you're gonna have a couple of months in the, at the beginning of the year where there's no kids.
Right.
Cuz they're not out of school yet. And you're gonna have a couple of months at the end of the summer, when they're back in school, so.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to limit yourself to kids. You could look at retired people that might wanna. Pick up a little something.
That might be better cuz those, you know, they, more, I mean, just more experienced and, and push around the bigger mowers and stuff.
Find some old farmers or something that. Still wanna sit on a tractor, but not a big tractor.
Right. It's probably the only thing they know how to run. It's not electrified.
Well, I, you know, with this discussion, I think it is cost-effective for us to. Well, to do our own mowing, but I think there might be a better way of. Pooling our resources to make this work.
Will the trade-in value of. The mower that you're planning to trade in decrease substantially?
It already has. I wanted to trade it last year and went from sixty-two hundred down to thirty-seven. Fifty. But you got a, another full year of running in and out of it and the deck's starting to go. We, Steve's welded on it. I think Jeff's welded on it four or five times. It's just, it's shot. And that was a cemetery mower when I came here in twenty-seventeen and I mowed on it for three years. For three days in the cemetery by myself, three and a half, with no help. So by putting everybody in there now, it's not one person sitting in there for three days. Talking to themselves. It's nice to have that availability to. To do other projects. Like the trailhead sign we just finished up out there.
Yeah. Cuz that, cuz that pulls away.
Yep.
There, and I bring that up and do that, so that's.
Yep, and we had, we had a storm during uh, failure that we fixed. Up on Hoover, that we could pull away and, and do. Another one, we had a sidewalk, uh, the water ran down through the valley. And it washed out underneath the sidewalk and we got that fixed. And that's, this is stuff that we're getting to do now.
I just didn't know if there'd be anybody else out there more, more reasonable. There would be only them, I don't know, myself or.
I, I went with Merrill, Menger and, and uh, yeah. The place has hung up on me, Culvers. I thought I'd go all over the board and see what happened and.
Did you get a quote from Merrill?
I did, yeah.
Was the hundred?
Hundred and something, yep.
Well, I guess the other part of that is, is depend on who you got quotes from. Are they capable of doing the big job or?
I figured if anybody could do it, Menger could do it, Culvers I knew could do it. Josh, I even talked to Corey Pearson, Pearson Mowing, Corey did not want it. Cuz he'd have to hire five guys.
Right.
And buy five mowers at. Thirteen or fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand. They all said, they all three said the same, we can't get the state bid.
Decision time?
Just out of curiosity, did you ask anybody about any used tractors?
They all had a ton of hours. Helly's got one sitting up there, but I didn't ask him. It's got no deck under it, so you'd have to buy a deck.
Okay, one, one more thought. I know the cemetery scares off people. Would anybody bid us like the other easier stuff?
Hmm, they were all.
They wouldn't even bid that?
It's too much here, there, there. I mean, like Rosemary, two guys on that. It's fifteen minutes. And then you gotta load the mower up, go to the fire station, which is an hour. And then they beep, they bump around here and they do, they don't have to load up them. They can go to Second Street here. Ambet's, the five-way, Casey's. Uh, the abatement house on Davis. The abatement house down there on, what is it, West Walnut? And then we have guys on the west side to pick up a lot of those small stuff too. So two guys on this side of town and now we can bring an inmate with us and they can weed eat while the other two guys are mowing. And if one gets done, he'll weed eat too. So that's been a big help too. So. But we bow, I mean, we bounce around. I mean, I think the fire station, once it gets some grass, will be the biggest thing on the side to mow. Minus the uh, new trail. Which is how much, how far out? Is it a mile?
Just about, not much more than that.
That'll be. That should be all zero-turn stuff, that way.
Might be a retired guy out there.
I thought you were gonna retire and do it. I mean, it's easier said than done with retired people cuz they.
We got things to do.
That's right.
Places to go, yeah.
Travel, fish. Maybe you run a drag car, I don't know, um, why?
Break into the new police department.
Yeah, I try, we try.
I mean, I'm just asking, I, I get this a lot from people, that's why I'm asking questions, so.
We're trying to save the city a ton of money, but if we're buying parts on an old mower. I'm not sure why we waited till even on this next one, why we waited. One, some, ten, fifteen years on the next one. That should have been gone six years ago.
Well, before we get to the next one, we gotta get on to this one.
I'm just saying, I'm just giving out. Uh-huh.
We spent more time talking about this mower than we did all the other agenda.
I know, right?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I'm just.
If you can wave your magical wand and just, you know.
A lot of magic.
At least try and give you the facts.
You don't see any way of getting by with three mowers, huh? Four-wheel drive.
No. Because I got them on, I got two on that side of town, or three on that side down and one over here. And sometimes we bring two over here and two over there. But I'm only asking for one.
No way.
He's only asking for one.
You can have. Three people working. It sends more hours. And what will save the city money is not having to purchase the four. So when you begin to pencil out three units. three units, which is your highest cost versus the labor that's on it. That's that's all I'm trying to point out is.
Right.
There's a possibility you can get by with three. The only way you're gonna know is to do it. But again, I like to try to point stuff out.
If it rains three days, one week, you don't have time. And then the cemetery gets looking like it did before Memorial Day.
There's a lot of people that like to see rain in three days.
I do too, but yeah, but there is little days in those weeks that you can't can't. I tried that and I got they got two mowers stuck over here at the fire station. And we had to tear up um shapers this spring. And we went back in and had to refix shapers. Trying to push the envelope tapes from the brains. So we can mow.
Big mowing, the washed out rats and the weeds and that fire station hill is probably not doing any favors either. Going dust all over everywhere.
And we've been trying to stay out of them.
Where are we at council?
I get where you're coming from Shane, I really do. But this would give you what? Four? Four wheel drive mowers?
We already have four.
So this is.
This is just a replacement.
This is a replacement of ones.
Yes.
And the one that you wanna replace.
Isn't seven fifty eight January twenty fifteen? It's got what I think sixteen hundred dollars? It's got sixteen hundred dollars on it.
But according to the sheet, you've got one, one more good year of useful life out of it. According to the um what do you call it? The the average years remaining life?
Twenty fifteen and now would be five or two twenty would have been five. So you're at eight years.
Well, the the X seven fifty eight, right? That's what you wanna trade in.
Yep, it's in twenty fifteen.
Uh this sheet says it's a twenty sixteen.
I do have two seven fifty eights, but one's a sixteen. Hold on, I took a picture of it the other day of the uh.
Cause the seventeen says it only has nine hundred and fifty five hours.
That's, yep, that's. God, it me. He got the fifteen, the fifteen was here in the spring of sixteen. Where am I going? Somebody know how to run the mowers. There it is. So the one we're gonna get rid of is a one M O X seven fifty eight. A C F. M is a Mary O. Built on three. Let's see, wait, this is among three, two, two, six, nine. It was built on nine twenty nine of fifteen.
Came into your fleet in twenty sixteen.
In the spring of twenty sixteen, so you're still at seven years.
Also, I'd say we have two options on six point seven. We can have a motion to approve the purchase. Or we could table this. I guess there could be three options, a motion just to flat decline.
You know, at at a trade in of thirty seven fifty, even if we go another year with it and we get a trade in of nothing, I don't think we're out of line. I'm gonna make a motion to decline for the year.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by K to not purchase six point seven mower. Any other discussion from council? Public comment. Penny, would you please conduct a roll vote?
You can.
Yes.
South?
Yes.
Chrome?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to decline approval. Carrie. Six point eight, discussion of possible action. Purchase a Bobcat lawnmower for streets department in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred twenty seven dollars and sixteen cents. Without trying to be humorous, but here we are right back at it.
Well, I think this should fall in line with um the utilities ask for the lawnmower by postponing this until they can get three bids.
Your motion, Rich?
Yes.
Second. Who was it? Jeff, you say second? Motion to postpone receipt of proper bids for our operating procedures. Also discussion. Public comment. Penny, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Motion to approval, approve postponing carry six point nine review and approval, approval liquor license renewal Casey's East Main Street. Move to approve?
Second.
Teresa on the motion. Jeff on the second. Also discussion. Penny?
Chrome?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
Motion to approve Carrie six point ten review and approval. Cigarette, tobacco, nicotine safe permits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Teresa. Also discussion. Penny?
South?
Yes.
Chrome?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried six point eleven review and approval current bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by K, second by Rich. Questions, discussion on the bills as they were submitted. Public comment. Penny, would you please conduct the roll vote?
Tukin?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
Chrome?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to pay the bills. Harry. Seven point zero city administrators report.
I do not have anything.
Does council have any questions, comments, or direction for Jeremiah? Eight point zero mayor council reports, eight point one mayor's report. Just wanted to let inform the public that the Lions Club flag project is gaining traction. It looks like there's more in in a sense round two, the second setting than there was for the Memorial Day. Anyone that would I'd encourage anyone that has some interest to reach out to the Lions Club uh through their Facebook. As I don't know of any contact person to it will it would really look impressive. You can, we have a whole line of a a street neighborhood that have those. Eight point two council reports. Nine point zero public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, shame around the streets department. Um so the last couple of weeks, we've been having a lot of trouble down at the um brush pile. Um we've required quite a few things that are not supposed to be there. Um just recently we require inquired a roller. A roller. A motor, a roller. Um.
Like a roller for a yard?
Yep, yep. And a motor for a boat um was two, three weeks ago. Um I'm just hoping to get this out. So whoever's listening tonight can get it out to their friends to please. If they wanna get rid of a motor and something or a roller, to let us know Monday through Friday so we can put it in the right place. Um I've had people call me on the weekends now uh to tell me that Monday morning, you're going to have a roller and a motor sitting in your brush pile covered up with brush. So we've spent uh time the last couple of weeks here um having to dig the stuff out. Um rocks are another big one. We have a rock pile. It's over by the wastewater plant. Um we have it all blocked off. I'd like to have the blocks and rock put there, please. Um. I feel like this, the city is giving you an opportunity to dump your grass and your trees. Um and we may have to go to other actions if it doesn't stop. So just as a forewarning, I'm I'm thinking about buying cameras for over there. So we can start catching some people. Um it takes a lot of time out of our day to do that and it's frustrating that. So I'm just.
Well, and dangerous too.
Yeah. So when that goes through the chipping machine, uh we'll either break it or and we'll have to probably pay for that. Or we're gonna, I ran a uh not too long ago, there was in loader tires on the um bills is because I ran a spike through the sidewall and it couldn't be fixed. From a a big spike from a railroad tie and it had it, I still have the picture. It was sticking out of the side of the tire. So I'm just letting you guys know. I know you're out there. I wanted you all to know so you can tell your people to tell people. Thank you.
Thanks Shane.
Thanks.
It's disappointing to hear that. Ten point zero.
Well, Jeff.